I'd like to thank everybody for coming and we'll get started here. Would please stand for our indication of place, I'd ask Tom if he would.
My most kind and gracious heaven Father Lord is again with us this evening, thanking you old Lord for letting us see this day. Asking God to be with us, give us all their saints in your name. Lord be with everyone that lives around you here. Now our Father we ask that you be with us in this meeting, so thank you very much. Good pray with thy name, amen.
The next item, item two is reading and approval of last month's amendments. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve last month's meeting amendments. All of the papers can raise their hand. Motion carries the motion. The third item is old business. We have one item there. Text amendment, but we'll have an open up of public hearing for this. I'd ask Richard what the county's recommendation is.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Got a lot of good input from the June planning commission meeting. Got some good planning commission input and from the public. And based on those comments, made a lot of changes to the first draft. And the current version would be that for commercial outdoor firing and shooting ranges, and again, this would be for new ones. The Board of Commissioners would need to review each proposed new shooting range on a case by case basis. And the Board of Commissioners would need to approve a conditional use before anything would be approved. It would be potentially allowed in either the agriculture or the highway business district. And the proposed standards would be minimal undisturbed buffer at least 500 feet required along all property lines adjacent to or abutting residential use or districts. Number two, area where firing activity takes place, at least 500 feet from all property lines. Third one, applicant shall list proposed hours of operation as part of the application. Fourth one, protected natural or artificial barriers to be provided to prevent bullets, shells, or pellets from traveling to human occupied areas. And then last one would be applicant shall provide a copy of liability insurance as part of the application.
We have two people that would like to comment. So for the first, before we go there, is there any questions from the board that you have for Richard?
So, Richard, hours of operation would be part of the application at the time that the person gets for a conditional use permit, is that right?
Yes, sir. The intent in changing from what y'all reviewed from the last meeting was that instead of having it be one size fits all for the whole county, to look at it on a case by case basis depending on, you know, variety of factors. The topo, the part of the county, how close it might be to residences, how close it might be to a major road, what the proposed hours of operations might be for that particular business. And so, you know, it would really be up to the applicant to prove in a sense, because the applicant would need to get approval of a conditional use from first recommendation of planning commission and then a vote from the Board of Commissioners. So the applicant would need to show that he had a plan of action for a new commercial outdoor shooting range.
Okay, one more. On the NRA, thank you for your thorough research on that, the outline. But you, after looking at that, you concluded that it is best just to leave that well enough alone and not rely on the insurance companies to determine the safety standards and whatnot relative to the range operation?
Yes, sir. It's hundreds of pages and some folks out of Cherokee County were nice enough to, who've got Pickens County ties but run an operation in Cherokee County, were nice enough to let me borrow it. And out of the hundreds of pages, not all of it is related to commercial outdoor shooting ranges. You know, it's got a lot of other specs and, you know, related to law enforcement training and indoor shooting ranges. And so, yes, sir. Also spoke with our county insurance provider who said that really providing a copy of liability insurance would really go a long way to, again, showing that in any case by case basis, that an applicant would have a plan of action and not just apply for something speculatively.
I have one question. Where's the, before, that aside plan we submitted to the planning and the department showing the soldiers' ranges and all that, you're saying that item would not be included? Now, I'd like to know.
Yes, ma'am. I agree with one of the comments that was made as part of, as part of the public hearing last month when somebody said that it was a very broad, open-ended statement and that, you know, it could be taken as to basically say, well, you know, you've got to throw in everything, including the kitchen sink, on your proposal. And really if it's a case by case basis where it has to go through not just staff review, but the planning commission and then the Board of Commission, so that it not only has those three levels, but also a public hearing where residents get input, that it would be more appropriate that way.
Any other questions?
I got a question. Can't it be put in indoor instead of outdoor? Who wants to go out there and stand in the rain? Who wants to go out there and stand in the cold and the hot and everything else? Why don't they do indoor instead of outdoor? Because I will tell you, under federal law, every bit of the, every bit of the shooting that's done, everything's got to be accounted for. The lead that's fired, if it's shot in the bank, it's got to be recovered. Because that's a no-no. I got in the back of the battery set from the back end of the truck, that's a real matter.
Yes, sir. I understand your point, and that would be a market decision. If there's a market demand for indoor, much more than there is outdoor, then even if this were to be approved, say recommended by the planning commission and approved by the Board of Commissioners, it may just sit here as part of our ordinances and there may or may not ever be, you know, a new commercial outdoor gun range in Pickens County.
Because commercial, it's not be set in indoor. You wouldn't have all the problems with the noise. I'm talking about commercial, not individual people that choose or have two or three people that shoot or whatever. That stop all the problems. Does that make sense?
I understand your point. I went down with Jay last week, looked at that in the first, in the first, indoor range.
Any other questions? Okay. We have two people that'd like to comment on the shooting range. Harold, Kentrall? You have three minutes.
Well, I appreciate, remember before, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you again, appreciate you speaking last month. I was a little unprepared last month, but I have a little more information this time that I would like to pass on to you, that I'd like for you to consider. I appreciate the extension on the property line issue. However, I'm going to have to say to you, I don't feel nearly enough, on each one of you, maybe before you vote or sometime tonight, if you were standing on your front porch out here and look across the road, it's barely over 500 foot to the railroad track across the road. You can't, you can't evade that noise at that distance. If you look on your NRA note list that Richard has provided, it even caution you that anything less than a half a mile would entertain noise complaints. 500 feet, not near a half mile. So, you need, you need to, you need to think about that. And before you vote, I hope each one of you will, will take into consideration, how would I like to have that within 500 feet of my house and have to listen to the noise continuously? I won't give you just a small history lesson if I can, and I do it at, possibly my, I hate to name somebody here, but I'm probably one of the only ones in here that live next door to one. And it's, it's a thousand feet from my property line to the shotgun range at Pickens County Sportsman's Club. It's probably closer to 5,000 feet to my house. And I can hear it inside my house when they're shooting, particularly the high-powered rifles. I had one occasion that they had a night shoot up there. And it, and this was Pittsburgh night. And it actually, I can't describe to you how terrible the noise was at the volume that was being shot that night. So I'm, I'm just going to say, I appreciate Todd's comment on, on the noise and the people that will be presented to you here in the future for outdoor shooting range will be doing it to make money. And I, I might be having somebody else in the future by these comments, I don't know. But it's, it's not fair to a neighboring property owner anywhere near 500 feet to have to subsidize somebody else's financial situation. I owned my property long before Pickens County Sportsman's Club had a, had a range on Jones Mountain Road. When they first started over on the other end, they had less than 50 members, I believe. They attained some property at a pretty good price. Immediately after that, they increased their membership. Just a little over a month ago, I was under the impression it was 350 members. When we met last month, the president of the club advised me that their count is 400 members now. So what, what you need to, to take into consideration, if you're, if you're going to be shooting on your property, you're going to shoot a few minutes, it's going to be overdone with. But if you're going to put a firing range somewhere and allow 400 members to shoot, when, when one shoots and gets finished, it's not at all unusual for another two, three, five, or whatever, to come in and start shooting. And this ordinance that you're proposing, even, even proposing mock war gas, how in the world could we even consider such a thing in Pickens County? And why would we want to subject our commissioners to that kind of a decision making? Hard to get everything said about something this volatile in a short period of time.
All right, Mr. Tom Porter.
I'm Tom Porter, resident of the Gorman County, a board member of the Pickens County Sportsman's Club. I came here tonight to really comment on the document, but I have to admit, it was the document that was in the Pickens Progress, which is, you know, has converted my comments to a question. Pickens Progress reported it was 500 feet plus 500 feet outside the range. Is it now simply 500 feet?
According, according to what I'm reading, that's what it's saying. All right.
Then I can, my only concern representing the Pickens County Sportsman's Club is that the shooting sports should be encouraged. We have no complaints with someone coming in as, as competition to us. We have no opposition to the, you know, to the, an increase in the shooting sports in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Yes.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
How do we address the concerns of the gentleman over here with respect to noise?
We would like to meet with him. The, I am, I am responsible for construction on the property of the Pickens County Sportsman's Club. I have already changed things, and I'd be glad to show him, where we built burns to focus noise up and not out. I have other plans to build further burns, to do pine tree plantings as a noise abatement. We recognize that we need to be a good neighbor. The Pickens County Sheriff's Department fires at probably several times the number of rounds we do just adjacent to us. Fortunately for everyone, it's down in a valley and the sound is pretty well contained. We're up on the ridge. The ridge is, is really the only place, you know, suitable and on the property that we own for such activities. So we've got to do what we can to, you know, be good neighbors. Now, one, my other comment about this ordinance is, you know, I think, I think we're grandfathered, we've been there since 69, and, but I would like to ensure that, that our organization is indeed grandfathered and protected under both state and county law.
Mr. Cagle, I'll, you know, just as a point of order, sure, I'll say to answer two things to confirm it. The first would be the 500 feet. It is correct that all activity would need to take place a minimum of 500 feet from all property lines. But that would not result in a stacking of 500 plus 500. It would essentially mean any new proposed outdoor shooting range that touches residential, it would need to have a 500-foot buffer. But if there's, let's say, commercial to commercial or commercial to agriculture property, even though a buffer might not necessarily be required along that property line, the firing activity would still need to be 500 feet. But again, you know, it, it wouldn't be a double. It would not be, you know, a thousand feet before anybody could do anything. And then the second thing is, this proposed text amendment is just for new commercial outdoor shooting ranges. I will say, if somebody walked in the door today and found a piece of property zoned highway business and said, "I want to do, you know, a new commercial outdoor shooting range," they could apply for a conditional use application. And it would go through the planning commission and then to the Board of Commissioners. There would not be standards such as these for review. It would just be whatever their proposal would be would stand on its own there.
So this is giving the county or a neighbor, potential neighbors, wherever this range would go in, a little bit of more of a buffer and, and a little, little more governance behind the, or a regulation of that potential shooting range?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cantrell, your appearance here is to really just make us aware of the sound concerns that you personally experienced. And you're not suggesting that what we do today should impact what's currently being done at Jones Mountain today, are you?
Actually, I'm not. I probably have some, some other remedies to deal with that situation. I just don't want to do it, to be honest with you. But, but I'm speaking on behalf of other people that might have to contend with the same thing I've had to contend with. It's, I mean, unless you listen to it, you will not understand what I'm talking about.
Look, Mr. Porter has offered to sit down with you, I think, and, or you've, you've offered to sit down with Mr. Cantrell and have a discussion.
Could I just ask one question? Does the county have a noise ordinance?
There is a nuisance ordinance.
I said a noise ordinance.
Well, it's a nuisance ordinance, although it's exactly...
It covers everything, so it is nuisance and violation mainly. You know, we've got the car, but fold the horse.
So, Richard, under this proposing, we get another look at every opportunity that comes before us, and we get to hear from all the constituents that are joining that piece of property?
Yes, sir, that's correct. So now, as revised, essentially, you know, standards would be added if somebody came forward with a proposal. Right now, they could still come forward with a proposal for a conditional use approval.
But there's no standard?
But there's no standards.
Any other questions, comments, or board?
I think my problem still with it is this is commercial use on agricultural property. And I think if you look at the purpose and intent of agricultural districts, the way they're set up in 67, section 67.8, it's supposed to be strictly for agricultural and forestry use, more or less. And I, I just, that's been my problem, one of my problems with it now, is I think how a business or industrial or something is more correct use for it, or instead of putting it out in neighborhoods where you have agricultural property. That's still a big problem with it.
I agree with that too, and that was kind of back in my mind, too, you know, farmer and agriculture.
It's, it's putting, it's crossing over and putting a commercial use on agricultural district. And, I don't know what the answer to that is.
What about that, Richard?
Right, the challenge in Pickens County is there's a very small percentage of land zoned commercial or industrial. Another thing that we've heard as staff, because we can't speak for the private market demand, we just know what we've heard and what we've seen in other places. Because obviously, you know, we don't work in the private sector. But what we see is, there's a growing trend in Pickens County and in other North Georgia counties for agritourism and for recreational opportunities on properties zoned or traditionally have been used for agriculture. Things like Yahoo Farms, farm wineries, zip lines, you know, mudding, I mean, all kinds of stuff. I mean, you know, you can, you know, I wouldn't be able to name all the different options. But, you know, now, does that mean that outdoor shooting range is, is included in that? Maybe yes, maybe no. That's, you know, that's part of the private market demand in some ways. But, I mean, this, this is kind of where it overlaps between the public and private.
Could they, do we need another use in their, a district in there between the two for that? Or could they come in and if they wanted to put down an area of this agriculture, come in and request that it be rezoned to what they did it rather than having it put on that?
Yes, ma'am, that's a good point. I mean, anybody, if they had a strong enough case, they could apply for rezoning and then apply for a conditional use approval. That, that's a possibility.
Yeah, I'd just really like to see it, put commercial use on agricultural property.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to motion that we approve the proposed, the revised text, subject to the agricultural portion being deleted. And allowing that to come forward, Richard, in a manner in which you described in the future time. Somebody has agricultural land, they want to use it for this, they come in and submit it as a commercial, and you deal with it that way.
I'll second.
With conditional use.
Right.
I'll second.
I have a motion second. For the, we've claimed.
Counselor, did I get that right?
You got a second?
I have a second.
So, Richard, you'd look at, when we look at sections 67, I say, deleting HE section.
Yes, yes, yes.
Just have a heart with this one.
Just how we do this, conditional use, how we do this.
A motion second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, for the very end? Next item is new business. We have a rezon request. I'd like to announce we'll have a post hearing for this rezon request. Mr. Roger Mary Ellen Schultz, I'd like to ask Richard what's the counter recommendations?
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. This is for a portion of a total of 32 acres. 3.3 acres on split rail trail off Hickory Cove Road has been surveyed and is proposed to be rezoned from agriculture to state residential. And if approved, the intent is to enable other folks to purchase the property and build a single-family home on it. There were no, there was nothing that stood out in the criteria to consider for rezoning. And the area is identified for conservation, which is consistent with low intents residential. Staff recommend approval.
Any questions, comments, or Richard's? Is Mr. or Ms. Schultz here?
I'm their son. They were unable to come, they're in their late seventies.
Is there any you'd like to add to what the county said?
It's, I live there, it's beautiful property, it's very, just a few homes in the area. I have one of them. And it's, it's just a beautiful area, and we'd like to explain it to a lot of, a few other folks moved in in the area.
Any questions for Mr. Schultz? Motion to approve. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All of you in favor, please spread your hand. Motion carries. That takes, that closes that public hearing. We have another public hearing for rezon request. It was up from the county. I'd like to ask Richard, what county's recommendations?
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Yes, sir, this is proposed zoning correction. The area around the intersection of Camp Road and Refuge Road is mostly zoned commercial and a good bit of it is owned by the Turner family and the actual Turner Tire property. and a good bit of it is owned by the Turner family and the actual Turner Tire property that's been used for auto service since about 1989. In 2005, for whatever reason, when zoning was first adopted, that property was listed as residential zoning and has not been changed. So this is a proposal by staff to correct that, and, you know, that would help the property owners for any future, you know, variety of reasons, you know, handing down the property from generation to generation, or insurance purposes, or a variety of things. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Richard? Is anybody here from Turner Tire that would like to comment? Is there a motion? You have a patient to approve? Have a move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. That closes that public hearing. We have another public hearing from Mr. Tommy Quick. I'd like to ask the county what their recommendation is.
Thank you, Mr. Gagel. This is property on Henderson Road, near the intersection with Young Lou, and it's a total of 3.9 acres, but a one-acre tract has been surveyed to rezone that one-acre tract from rural residential to suburban residential, so that a home can be constructed on the one-acre tract, and it can be subdivided out. This is consistent with residential development for future use in the comprehensive plan, and nothing else stucked out as being unusual. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Richard? Is Mr. Quick here?
I am.
Anything you'd like to add, sir?
No, well, actually, yes. I've lived here about 20 years now, and I'm trying to help an employee mine out. In this county, you can't buy a house for $100,000. And I've helped this man for seven years, and I need to give him a piece of land so we can build this man a house. So this is all in contingency of y'all letting us do that. That's all I have to say.
Any questions, Mr. Quick? Have a move? In a second, any discussion?
What's the reason for the, I mean, what's the problem with not getting a covenant on the man?
Yes, sir, it's currently zoned for rural residential. When somebody wants to split land into, the minimum lot size for new lots is one and a half acres for rural residential, and the current property owner wants to split off one acre, and so the minimum lot size of suburban residential is one acre.
Sort of by well versus county water?
Right, we won't count it water.
Law.
Yeah, I can go hide it right in front of my house.
Okay.
If it burns down, you can sit in the road and shoot my house and his when we get done with it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of approval of the motion, please raise your hand. Motion carries. That closes that public hearing.
You're a nice person.
Yeah. I have one more public hearing, looks like a text amendment. I'd like to ask Richard what the county's recommendation is.
Thank you, Mr. Gagel. This is a little bit unusual, because we rarely get private applications for text amendments. So in this case, staff is not going to make a recommendation. I'll give you a summary of it. Representatives of RLF Talking Rock Properties have been in discussions with staff regarding possible development of about 3,000 acres in the northwest part of the county, and representatives would like to amend the county code ordinances. Currently, the code requires all new public and private residential streets to be paved and have a minimum of 60 feet of rideaway. Representatives would like to amend the code so that subdivisions having lot sizes of 10 acres or greater in gated communities could occur on gravel private streets with minimum 40 feet of rideaway and maximum 16 percent grade.
And, Richard, why didn't you make a recommendation?
Staff has gotten input from other staff members, typically for utilities placements and for public safety, 60 feet of rideaway and paved is standard. Public safety is really looking at both response time and the ability to get two vehicles, and if they've got a large fire truck, or possibly even an ambulance with 40 feet of rideaway and a gravel road, and, you know, if it's getting up towards 16 percent grade, it's going to be a challenge for public safety. So they did give us input into that.
So that they are uncomfortable. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir. But, right, I mean, this private application, you know, it's up to the applicant to justify it one way or the other. So, you know, basically, that's what planning and development does not give a recommendation in this case.
Any other questions, comments, or Richard? No one sign up? Is there any speakers that would like to speak?
I'm Heskey Spock, yes, State is going to speak first.
Well, I believe Mr. Marger formally represents this group, and to kind of give a little background as to how the situation got here, when the RLF Talking Rock purchased this property over the northwest end of the county, they made a talk with some former staff members and kind of felt like they'd be able to do something less than what was currently required, but I'm not saying that's here and there. So they purchased the property, and they would like to subdivide some of it without the paid requirements, which I'll come back to in just a second, try not to get too off the convalued. So after I guess we said the smoke cleared, we sit down and talk with Norman Pope and with Rob Jones, and Norman, if I remember correctly, recommended a conditional use rezon proposal to ask for this. And it would have been particular to one of the tracts of this property, which is about 300 some odd acres. And that was last March, and Norman's staff recommendation was to approve it, but Phil wisely realized that that was really not within the context of the development regulations to be within something that a conditional use was applicable to. So he recommended it be pulled off the agenda last March, and it was. They let it fly for a while, and then, I would guess about two months or so ago, there were some more talks with Commissioner Jones and with Mr. Marger and some folks, and they recommended that it be put on the commissioner's workshop agenda again a couple of months ago. And there was a fair amount of discussion back and forth, and their recommendation, their direction they wanted was to remand it to the planning commission for a recommendation. So, yes, I've been doing this nearly 30 years, and I was a county commissioner in Gilmore County two terms, and I've never saw a private application for what we call an ordinance change, y'all call it text amendments, the same thing. I respect that. I personally like this, and this comes from not just being in the surveying business, I would like to, I guess, as any would, but with my experience as the county commissioner, granted in a neighboring county, not the same, and I'm never going to say the way anybody does it anywhere else is better, because I have that thrown at me a lot of times, and I didn't care for it either. What this does is, what these folks bought was pulpwood company land, and there's lots and lots of big tracts of pulpwood company land and family-owned land all around. And the way the development regulations read, regardless of the zoning, it's one way of looking at it, if you want to build a road to divide in more than one tract per year, then it has to be a 20-foot wide paved road that meets all the county specifications for a county road. And that's the way it is, and that's the way it has been for some time. Now, what that does in the economics of things is that if you're going to, if you've got a piece of land, whether if you're looking at the resale value, or if you want to do something with it yourself, you're looking at a pretty heavy development standard. The infrastructure cost and that paving is, can be pretty heavy. So what that does is that drives it down to where the economics dictate a smaller lot size and higher density. That's the end result. So since there's only so much market absorption and demand for one, well, if you go below three acres, it needs to be curbed and bettered, I'm sure y'all are familiar. So what it kind of does is it drives the market to where it needs, it can only absorb so many three-acre lots at a time, but if you want to put this much infrastructure in, the smaller the lots go, the more sense it makes. So it really drives it towards three-acre lots. And the market is not going to absorb so many of those, and that would be an eventual look at all the large acre tracts in the county, is what kind of demand and absorption rate would you have for three-acre lots? That's sort of a philosophical question to address. But what this proposal would do is allow folks, particularly in properties zoned agricultural, to develop their property into 10-acre lots, which is very low density, and basically fix it that way, such that it can't be further subdivided, you know, it will always be a 10-acre tract, and it could be affordably developed into tracts that big without it not making economic sense on the bottom line. The concerns that Mr. Osborne raised, I'm very familiar with, and I'm not really trying to lobby forward, I'm really not an advocate, and Mr. Marger's an advocate, I'm just a surveyor, but I would like to make y'all fully aware of what kind of what we're talking about doing, so that you can make an informed decision. The rideaway width really doesn't have anything to do with public safety, that's how far out you can go to maintain a ditch, or repair a slope, or put in an underground power. I don't think there'd be any objection from, to make that larger than 40 feet, but I don't think, you don't see the rideaway when you drive down the road, you see the road and what's being cleared. So typically, you want to have what's necessary to clear. In other words, if you're building a 20-foot wide road with five-foot shoulders, that's 30 feet, if you're building perfectly flat land or along with a gradual ridge, it don't matter if you've got a 100-foot rideaway, you're probably only going to see 30 feet of it cleared. Now, what's proposed is not make the width less than your typical subdivision road, so the width as far as emergency apparatus passing is not any different, but the slope is the same as with a paved road, and we've got, I didn't bring anything documented to hand you, but 16 percent is where gravel roads start having slippage, especially with heavier vehicles. Gilmore County allows 18, some of the other mountain counties allow up to 20 or 22 without getting caught up. I drove fire trucks before as a volunteer firefighter, and I can tell when I hit 16 percent. I've had the clutch stall out, and you just have to stop, and hope you're not in anybody's way when you get above 16 percent. So I don't think that it poses a safety matter. Another thing that he didn't really mention on was the ability to plait, just like to the middle of the road, instead of allowing the rideaway in fee simple. And what that does is that protects the county from the possibility, the probability, of a bunch of homeowners trying to turn that over to the county road in the future, because that's one thing that we were always mindful of in Gilmore County, was if we didn't have to take in a road into the system and have more expense paid on it and more allocated in the road department budget, then the taxpayers were a lot better off. So the bigger concern in most all the counties that are kind of on the transition between the metropolitan and truly rural are they don't want to take in more roads to maintain if they can help it. Now, in the metropolitan area, which Pickens County's development regulations are more closely modeled after, they want you to build it the county road, the county specs, they want you to turn it over to the county, and the county add it to the inventory, and the county has that much more to keep up. That's the way the ordinance is kind of geared. What this does is this type road would probably, I don't see how it could hardly ever be turned over to the county, because for the county to receive a county road they've got, the property owners have to have a 60-foot rideaway and fee simple that they own to deed to the county, or the developer does. By making it 40 instead of 60, you take that ability to comply with the county regulations out of the way. And then by allowing it to be an easement, instead of a rideaway, nobody's really going to own it to deed to the county. Everybody would have to get a release from their mortgage, and everybody on that road would have to sign a rideaway deed to make it a county road, which makes it very, very It does stipulate that there'd be a strong road maintenance agreement in place to take care of and make sure that it doesn't go into a state of disrepair, which is a little bit more stringent than the current specs on a county only privately maintained road, which don't really have that particular stipulation in. In the past, I thought an opposite end was in Gilmore County, one of these similar roads, the developer, if you're going to do a privately maintained road in Pickens County, homeowners' association is eventually supposed to become owner of that 60-foot street and land. There's nothing that says the homeowners' association, as in LLC, will maintain its legal status every year through meetings and renewals. And there is a road in Gilmore County where that happened, and the ownership entity, the LLC, or the HOA, has dissolved, and it became a tax parcel that was sold at tax sale, and one of the homeowners in there bought the road, because it's a strip of lands, and now he's trying to charge the other people on that road total to try to get money to keep the road up. So to me, from a practical standpoint, having a fee simple private rideaway is a liability in that you can eventually harm the people that live on it through these LLCs and homeowners' associations not being properly set up or maintained. And on the other side, it makes it really easy for the homeowners to say, we've been paying all this money all these years to keep the roads up, let's just deed it to the county. And then they come into a meeting like this and say, we pay taxes, we pay taxes, take our roads. And if it's paved, you don't really, if it's paved and built to their standards, to the county's standards, you don't have a real good argument to turn them down, so you're adding more roads to the county inventory, and that's how it is right now. What this would do is allow a low density, there's a lot of people in the mainland Northeast who really push for gravel roads, because it's not impervious surfaces, it doesn't contribute to runoff as much, and that sort of thing, in a way that's economical for a property owner or a developer to do, and it insulates the county from having a big bunch of roads that it doesn't need. So that's my two cents worth, and it might not even be two cents worth.
Mr. Chastain, aren't you just kicking the can down the road?
In what way?
By not paving the road and doing it according to the current specs?
I really don't think so. There are a lot of people that want to move to a rural area that don't want paved roads. I didn't used to believe that until I was a county commissioner, and people came and complained that we paved gravel roads. And knowing that upfront this would be a gravel road, and it would always be privately maintained, people would buy in with that knowledge, and it's not really, there's nothing that says they can't later, like, you know, we researched several instances in Pickens County where this type of development, it used to be regulated to see if there were any bad outcomes, and I couldn't find any. Some of them, like the Oaklands, of off the lumber company road, they've come back and paved later, but it wasn't a requirement at the time. So as the people moved in, I guess enough of them decided, we'd like to pave it, and they did, but there was no requirement to. And other places, they liked the gravel roads, and some people say it keeps people from going too fast in the neighborhood, it's the only natural speed impediment there is besides putting those speed breakers every couple hundred yards. So it's a personal preference thing, not necessarily kicking a can down the road, in my opinion.
I've just never seen a happy ending to that.
To leaving a road unpaved?
I mean, people, you know, and I appreciate your suggestion of harmony among all of the property owners pitching in and doing their part to keep it maintained, but in practice, it just, it just creates a problem, I think. And... And I, I drive a fire engine, I know exactly what you're talking about there. And I also know about narrow roads and gravel roads and the length of time it takes to get to where you gotta get because if it's not a smooth, easy road, it takes longer. If you're driving a tender or an engine, it takes longer to get there. And the advantage of a paved road is it's better marked, you can see better where you're going. And I don't think, if it's built to the county specs, it doesn't seem to me as an impediment to the county to ultimately take it over because that's why there's a county spec for taking it over. What, what would it do to the overall cost of the project if you were, have a 60-foot right-of-way and you were to pave the road according to the county specs?
Well, I'm not a developer or a graider, so I can't tell you, you know, hard numbers. I know it's a significant increase. The width of the right-of-way again is, don't let that be a red herring. I mean, I, I think if you amended it to be 60 feet, I don't think anybody's going to notice that on a 10-acre lot. My recommendation for making it 40 was to make it an impediment for it to go on with county maintenance later. The impediment or the downside to it becoming a county road, even if it's built to county specs, is if you build two miles worth, that's two more miles they've got to mow about four or five times a year. And two more miles they've got to keep the limbs cut out of the way over tree falls near the road. And about every eight to 12 years or 15 for the life cycle, that's another county road that has to be repaid at taxpayer expense that you're taking out of the...
Wouldn't, wouldn't property values reflect that though, and therefore taxes would be higher?
That's a, that's a, that's a debate that's been going on as long as I've been in the, in the, in the working world. That's one reason why counties pave roads and justify the expense. It's usually should be done as a, you know, to improve connectivity between roads for emergency response and that sort of thing. But it is, there is that discussion of, does it pay for itself? Does it make it, you know, more attractive? And that's something I, I don't know, the pressure might be giving an opinion on that. I know there are people who want a gravel road or who are willing to live on a gravel road in order to find what they want. And you won't find a whole lot of 10-acre tracts for sale for people to build in the state or a mini-farm on in Dickens County because if people want to develop tracts of land that could yield that product, they're gripped by the economics to create three-acre lots instead. And I don't know a single, I'm not, I'm not in the MLS and a Realtree thing, but I don't know of any 10-acre tracts that are in a nice new neighborhood that you can build in. But I think there's enough of a market that at least my clients are willing to take the risk on it to see if there's, if there's a market there. Based on what I've seen in other counties, I can...
But you don't have an objection to a wider right-of-way?
No, sir.
Your objection is to paving the road?
That, that's, that's the whole thing. And again, I would say the shoulders, the actual surface width is not compromised. There was talk of, can we go to 18 feet, can we make the shoulders narrower? And I said, you know, in Gilmer, I'd have to check, there's a couple of rural counties and then over in North Carolina that allow 18 feet with two and three-foot shoulders because it becomes a one-lane road. And I've been in a tanker trying to pass another tanker on a road like that, and you have to find a driveway.
Is that comfortable?
Well, it, it's uncomfortable and it's unsafe. So my proposal against the objections of some of those that wanted lesser requirements was I don't feel good saying that this is a good proposal unless we maintain those widths for the surface and the shoulder so that, you know, two tankers can pass and they shove the water to a house by.
How, how many lots in the 3,000 acres?
I guess you could roughly divide it by 10 and then take a few off for roads and excess. So that's another thing.
250, 300? It's not, it's less than 300, but it's more than 250?
Or around, would be my guess. And I couldn't speak for them and tell you for sure, but we, we might have done...
Well, you were surveying, so I thought you would lean out the lots too.
No, it's just in this one section.
How many acres in that one section?
Was it 327? 327? How many lots were there in the plan that we had back in charge? Another thing to think about, to me, this would open up a sort of a free-market exercise. Right now, I think the regulations say it doesn't matter where you're at in the county or what kind of property you've got, if you're going to make a tract 10 acres or smaller, you've got to pave it just like it was a subdivision on, on the road. We've gone out there in the lower towns to help us stick. Close in, where the economics in the market may well justify three-acre lots with paved roads or one to one and a half acre lots with urban gutter. But in the outer-lined area, like you say...
20 lots.
We had 20 lots on 320, so it's roughly one...
Every 16 and a half acre.
About one for every 16 acres. It was the way that the park we worked out about. The end result is for that area of the county, which this was that controversial piece about 10 years ago where they were going to try to do three lots per acre and have 7,000 homes. I told those peoples, we were, they were initially our clients, but I told them, "That'll never fly and I don't feel good about that," so they fired us. And then they lost the property, and now we're working for the people who want to buy it, just so you know how the dots connect. But even if that's not, you know, what they were proposing is not even allowable really in, in Dickens County, New Zealand. But if you went to suburban residential, and some of this property is owned suburban residential, they would rather develop it this way than where they're going to have lots in urban gutter streets. So you'd be looking at, was it roughly a third of its zone SR? Roughly about 1,000 acres, maybe 900 or so is on his own suburban residential anyway. So that's conceivably 600 lots. Plus, if you apply for rezoning to suburban or small, you know, small estate or small ag and the rest of it, you know, in context, you don't, you found a real good reason to turn it down. You wind up with, you know, with probably 1,000 lots out there anyway. Whereas this allows for a lower intensity, less impervious, less impactful development on land that's, that's...
Off the beaten path.
It's in a more remote area where that's more conducive.
So how, how many miles would you estimate of roads there are in the 3,000 acres?
Oh, I am not prepared to take, you mean, would there be if it was developed this way? Do we have a number, amount of road on that one? Summary?
Five miles? Is it four miles?
This would be a good representation of there's a lot of existing roads, existing county roads that were, were part of it.
Would you plan on developing the entire 3,000 acres or that way or just this 327?
I think that they don't have to do all of that work. They don't, what they told me and directed us, they don't want to do any of that high-density. They've done properties throughout the country. They've got people in the middle of California, people in Florida, they like the low-density, low-impact. I mean, I'm not trying to make a sales pitch or I'm pressing on my job. But that's what they're after. They're not looking to build, you know, high-density roads and paving and that sort of thing on the rest of it. But that might be something they look at. I couldn't, I couldn't commit that they would not, especially since some of the fronts talking long creep or the economics would support the higher-end construction.
I've been to a number of commissioner meetings where there's always people, but not always, but frequently, people in there who live on gravel roads and who are raising cane with the commission. And you've probably sat in that seat and heard this, who want their road paved.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's, you know, that's my, that's my concern, that we're just kicking the can down the road.
Mr. Throwings, that, that's a valid point. Most of those people, and from me having to sit in that chair, are saying, "We pay the same tax as the people that live on Catalina Road or they live on Yukon Road or Jones Mountain Road, but they're on a paved road, we're on a dirt road. So you're discriminating against us if you don't care about us." And these were people that, one in particular that was a frequent flyer at our commission meetings. They built a house right up on the road and then the property down the road was split up a few times and they came to complain about the dust that came up on their porch, understandably. And they said, "Well, what we built there, we were near the end of a dead-end road." And what had happened, somebody had gone and only put maybe 20 or 30 tracts on vacant land in accordance with all the standards, but it increased the traffic in front of the house. Here, everybody would know what they were getting into and they really wouldn't have any room to complain if they did because they'd be buying into it saying, "This'll always be gravel, this is what we want."
I understand, people tend to have short memories, especially if they smell two or three times.
And that's, that's why, you know, to protect the people who sit in those, whether they're the ones that are there now or, you know, substantial people in office. There's even a, you know, part of this includes a covenant that the developer would record. It would show up in every title report that says, "These will not be county maintained roads. These will be privately maintained roads." That's the intent. And so that, basically to remove anybody that would come to those crowds.
It's a wonderful theory.
I want to say it's been working for about 10 years without a hitch elsewhere.
I have lived on gravel roads and I can tell you, no woman wants to deal with that dust and problems.
Well, that's fine. I just wanted to...
Nice to hear from somebody who...
I was going to say, Mr. Mark, if you had anything to comment on.
Well, you know, my opinion before this august body is probably the biggest waste of time that's ever come before you. If you want to know anything about law dealing with real estate, don't ask me. I don't know a thing about it. And if I have any questions about real estate law, I call Phil. He never agrees with me, but whatever. It's because he knows what he's doing. I live on Upper Salem Church Road, which has a little bit of gravel up there to, I guess, Henderson Valley. And although I'm on, I'm on, I'm on a paved road, I like where I live and I want to continue it. Now, you all have been here most of your lives. I'm a newcomer, I've owned it there for 29 years. And in the 29 years, I've more or less, as a lawyer, watched the economy of the area grow, go up and down and watch all the terrible things happening with real estate and the fact that I hope that it's going to come back. I don't own any real estate in this county. My wife owns anything worth while and she takes care of those things for me. But it seems to me that Mr. Pebble's idea of the theories, nothing comes to fruition, Mr. Pebble, that hasn't at first been a theory. And most theories are down-written and it takes an awful lot of pressure to bring them up. I mean, in every facet of society and business. I know that in this county, there are some very, very strong feelings about real estate and what you do. But there are people like me who may or may not add to the community, who do bring some money into the county. I don't, but my wife does. But the folks that we represent here, as Mark has already pointed out, are very, very substantial people. And they don't come here running in trying to get what they can as fast as they do or they're to hire the real lawyer. I mean, it's obvious they don't know what they're doing in certain respects, but by getting Mark, they made up for it. What I'm asking you to do is don't think about theory, think about fact. How can this help if you have 10-acre lots, regardless of what the road is, as long as people can get to them? If it brings in money to the county, it brings in more people. Now, I know there's a lot of people, I remember when Bill Quinton was commissioner and the one thing he hated, because I had just come into the county, is people who came from outside. But unfortunately or fortunately, as you look at it, that's what's happening. And what are you going to do? Say, "This is the way my granddaddy did it?" Or, "This is the way my grandchildren should want it to have done?" Again, anything that Marcus told you deals with facts. You know, I can tell you what I know about law is very, very simple and singular, but I do know that all of you are representing this county. And what you do, if you do it because you're doing it for your grandpa, that they'll make it. And I'm not attacking people who've lived here all their life. Most of my clients have and have taught me a lot. They've taught me everything but how to prune a tree, how to grow apples. I mean, and it's people like me that come with an open mind, who are looking to see and to find and to make a living or to bring money so that other people in the county can make a living. If you'd like to know anything more about my clients, we'd be glad to provide you with all the information, bank affiliations and the works. They are not, they're not in the whitewater business, but they are here to stay and they're here to help this county grow. So I hope that, as you always do, that you'll give this consideration. It's not an easy one. It's not easy when the staff won't make a recommendation. And God forbid we should let Phil speak, that would be the worst thing that could probably happen to our client. But in any event, we do appreciate the fact that you've spent the time with us, that you've given this time to talk to you. And I hope that no matter what you do, you don't think about yesterday, think about tomorrow.
Thanks, Mr. Mark. Is there any other comments? Any questions?
One thing I throw in your discussions and see alluding into our clients is this would not just be for that long tract, as y'all know. There's enough estate that, that they felt inclined to bring forth this request, but it would not just benefit them, but any large property owner who wanted to do something low-density with larger tracts in their hands, regardless of which side of the county it was on. I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions or comments? Phil, when, when these standards were adopted, how long ago was that? And so, is there any circumstance in which we have allowed, it would appear that there's any circumstance in which subdivisions have been developed without having a paved road in 20 years?
Mr. Chastain? I saw a bench and I know a little bit about that. Before 1999 or 2000, Dickens County Development Standards said that for five-acre lots in margin, that any road that serves such a building should be passable by all littered feet. There was no width, there was no maximum stroke, there was no minimum right-of-way. And there were, not thousands, but there were several subdivisions and divisions of land between the families and various parties done using logging roads under the premise that this was an all-weather road. And some picker one client around out in Full Law Church, we're at this mountain road down the church, the county land. They weren't as nice as what's called for in these standards, but they were nice enough that they felt like they could bring people in and fancy cars and ride them around and not scare them. Not road and mountain roads. And in Dickens County, they said, "We don't like those kind of roads anymore." And Mr. Roddy Buckler came around and, if he was here, I feel free to say this, because he said, "We, we don't want any more gravel roads." And my client's attorney got in touch with Phil and they agreed that the ordinance allowed it. So that was probably the last one. But we've resurveyed lots in there even recently and they've built really nice homes on it. They're a really nice part of the community down there. And so somewhere around that time, the development ordinance was revised in Dickens County to prohibit gravel roads. And there have not, to my knowledge, I agree with Phil on this, there's not been any sentence that, that this particular language was, was adopted after the old five-acre gravel all-weather road rule was, was done away with about 16 plus 17 years ago. But my point was, I not saw any travesties or any issues out of the ones that we surveyed under that old standard, it's far less than what's proposed here.
Are you aware of any studies that have been done that would say that this supplement is uneconomic if the road's paved?
To answer your question, I don't know of a particular study. But I think if you're looking at what the market will bear, it's a simple, here's, here's a way that I look at it, it's pretty simple. One of my challenges is making things that I understand, it's very complex, easy enough to understand, just ask my line. But when you put the infrastructure and the pavement... But when you put the infrastructure and the pavement and everything in place, and you take the 60-foot, fee simple swap of land, can you sell a 10-acre lot for the same per-acre price that you can a 3-acre lot? I think the answer is nowhere near. That's why you go to 3-acre lots. People will pay more per acre for smaller tracks. So when you mandate X development cost per mile, it's not going to be feasible to make 10-acre lots and make 3-acre lots for the same price, because you'll be able to sell those 3-acre lots for a lot more per acre. You know, if you take this 320 acres and buy it into 3-acre lots, you can sell, and you take it development in 10-acre lots, you can sell those 3-acre lots out for a grand total, and it's a lot more than the 10-acre tracks. So I can't hand you a report done by an actuary or somebody that's got some letters after their name, says this is not feasible. But I think the simple economics is, you can't sell a 10-acre track for the same per-acre price that you can a 3-acre price, for the same price you can a 3-acre track. So to me, I don't think you need a study to prove that in separate comparison.
You haven't come through yet, whether we were...
Yeah, I saw it. Uh-oh. Any other questions? So, councillor, if we were to approve this, we opened Pandora's Box for anybody that wants to develop 10-acre lots. Would you recommend the regulations to the board? If they would allow... Everybody, everybody knew that the commission...
My big problem would be that if you get all cul-de-sac on, most people are willing to live on dirt roads, that's one thing, your major roads coming in, your collector road, where you've got people bringing in building supplies, where you've got buses, where you've got emergency vehicles that push it out to the back of the way, those need to be standard roads, you know, very basic. And because it's just not safe otherwise. And you've got utilities, I mean, you're going to have water lines, and you're going to know that in the wells you're talking about. You're just going to need a lot of ways. The 16% rain isn't much for gravel roads.
Again, I keep getting the same one like I'm really frightened of, or...
Just don't go back to the past like you once, like he said.
Well, no, I was going to say, I don't know, I haven't talked with, I've talked with Rob Jones recently about this, I don't have any miles of county gravel road that you got, but they're not this wide, and they don't have this wide a right-of-way. And they're not posing a health risk, that sort of thing. With 10 acres, the homes will be far enough away that they're not complaining about dust on the porch, and they would be served by wells more than likely, because you're going to be in areas where there's not going to be county water, grad, and pressure, so you're not going to have fire hydrants sticking out on the road. So the only thing is, my experience, driving around a whole lot of the state of Georgia, where there's a whole lot of gravel roads, that a whole lot of people have on, and they don't have massive problems, they just either want it that way, or they haven't been able to get paid. But I mean, I certainly respect whatever y'all feel like recommending, I just felt like throwing that in. Probably 50 or 60 miles of gravel roads in Pickens, and the taxpayers are re-graveling straight in the middle of every year.
I don't know what it is now, I don't have any idea.
Ms. Holmes, would it help if we did any surveys for you of any of the questions that you asked? Is the difference between what a paved road and gravel road a cost? I understand that it's extremely...
I'm worried about the cost, that's the problem with the developer, I'm worried about the safety of the people that live in there, the children, the school buses, the trucks that are going to be coming in with this braid on gravel, and then they can pass other people. You don't have fire hydrants in here, if you have a forest park, this is on public land, right? You know, you have to evacuate. At least the collector roads should be paved, in my opinion, to get people in and out quickly and safely. That's, I'm not concerned about the cost, I'm just concerned about the safety of residents in this county.
Of course, if there's anything else that you think, or any member of the board feels that we should produce to you to give you a better idea of anything, cost estimates or safety estimates, I certainly don't want to live in an unsafe county, I don't want any fires by throwing me out of my home, even if it comes up with like gravel road right down the road.
And I would even say to your point, pardon me for standing up and down here, or for not, I think the order lowered to 14. I mean, 16 is where you start building rubber fire truck, but as somebody that strove big trucks, and some of them with red lights, I like 14 better than 16, I appreciate. And make the right-of-way width...
That's on Max Gray. On Max Gray.
That's talking about the Max, you know, 14.
I appreciate all your comments. Mark, you tell with the name Preble, I'm not a native here either. My grandfather came, father came out of Maine, so I'm a long way from original roots. But my mother was in Savannah, so I'm Georgian by birth. I just, I really, I really feel that going to gravel roads is a step backwards, and I just can't, I just can't support that. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move to deny the request. Do you have a move to deny the request?
Awesome.
They will move in second to deny the request. All of us in favor? Would you break your head? Thanks for the discussion. I just want to ask you, that takes it into board comments, or closes that hearing, takes it into board comments? Any questions, comments, or any more?
Could I take on the other movement, Frank, is this 500 feet of there? You've got a school here, you've got a church, whether that's still a class plan?
Advanced, I mean, are a complex question.
It's got to be commercial, it has to be divisional use.
Width, how far away? You've got to have a landing on the school in other language.
How far away from the shooting range is, what you recommended was that wherever the property line is, that from the property line, nothing can take place, no matter what the adjacent property is owned, nothing can take place for the first 500 feet. And if it is adjacent to residential use or zoned property, then there has to be a 500-foot buffer within that area where nothing can take place. In other words, no firing activity within 500 feet of all the property lines.
Now they have to, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I'm understanding it, what we voted on was, if, for instance, let's say, I decide to own over a gun range, I find a piece of property, if it's anything but commercial or highway business, I have to, A, get it rezoned, and get the condition used for it. I got a zoning change, which has come before this body, and then the board commissioners, and then with a special use, has to be brought in. So, you know, if somebody wants to put one up there, a school, or a church, or somewhere like that, it's got to come to this body for approval first, and then go to the board
Any other comments? Or...
Excuse me, thank you for all your input, it's very important, your discussion.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion to a chairman? All of us in favor, a motion here, you can...
I always do a germ of a motion by standing, but that way you've got everybody to get it in the right direction already.